To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. With an uncommonly hot summer and dangerously dry conditions, we are witnessing yet another season of terrible and destructive instances of fires throughout the West Coast, specifically here in California. As firefighters are deployed throughout the U.S. in areas most heavily impacted by these fires, let us pray for the safety of these men and women who have taken an oath to put their own lives on the line to protect people and property from the dangers of these fires. Let us keep them in our thoughts and pray for their safe return home to their families. We thank these courageous souls who put it all on the line, know little or no fear, and make sure that we are able to sleep soundly at night, knowing that they stand ready to answer the call for help. Let us pray for all of our first responders, particularly the men and women of fire and for their families. Let us pray for that the conditions improve, that we are better stewards of our environment to prevent such devastation from occurring frequently. We pray for this, and we pray for peace in our city, state, nation, and around the world for all people of goodwill this evening and always. Amen.
Mr. Kosak, may we have the report?
The agenda for the August 25th, 2015, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Friday, August 21st, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation and appointments. That three A is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, September 1st, 2015.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the Housing Authority and the City Council meeting for September 1st and September 8th have been canceled. However, we do have a City Council meeting in your neighborhood next Tuesday, September 1st, and it will be held at 6:00 P.M. at Bran Library and Art Center, which is located at 1601 West Mountain Street. And that's City Council in your neighborhood again, next Tuesday, September 1st, at 6:00 P.M. at Bran Library.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item at 3B is appointment of Board and Commission members, Garpetian. This is an appointment that was made by Councilmember Garpetian on June 2nd, 2015. B1 is Albert Abkarian, for the Civil Service Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved item 3B1. Okay. Is there a second?
Oh, well, seconded.
The second requested.
It does not require a second.
Okay. I have a request to speak by Jason Ross.
Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the Council, my name is Jason Ross, and I am the President of the Glendale Police Officers Association. I'm here tonight on behalf of my members, and want to begin by thanking you for allowing me to speak on this matter. I'll make it as quick as humanly possible. I'd like to begin by playing a recording of a phone conversation between Albert Abkarian, the nominee for the Civil Service Commission, and Detective Kambikian, a homicide detective with the Glendale Police Department. The recording was made on June 22nd, 2010, when Detective Kambikian called Mr. Abkarian, pursuant to his duties as a detective, in preparation for a criminal jury trial where Mr. Abkarian was listed as a defense witness. I would ask you to pay careful attention to Detective Kambikian's tone of voice. I would also ask you to pay close attention to whether or not there are any threats or ultimatums made by Detective Kambikian.
Hello?
Hi, is this Mr. Abkarian?
Yeah.
Hi, how you doing? This is Detective Kambikian from Glendale PD. How are you, sir?
Okay, how are you?
Good, good. Hey, the reason I'm calling you is I'm the investigating officer in the case concerning Mr. Robert Yusefian.
My brother-in-law?
Is he your brother-in-law? Okay. My understanding is that you were subpoenaed by the defense to testify in the trial. Is that correct?
Um, I'm assuming. I don't think I'm with it, but I'm sure I will be.
Oh, okay. I was just told that you're going to be one of their defense witnesses. That's why I'm calling you. Have they told you anything to testify in the trial, or have they said anything to you?
He has asked me if I would be a witness in this trial, and I told him that I have some information about what's going on. I told him that definitely I will be.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm calling you. I'm calling all the witnesses to, you know, find out what information do you have that's going to be offered at the trial, so that we both have an understanding of what your testimony is going to be. Can you tell me?
I don't think you would want to hear what I have to say, because it's not going to be very friendly to your side.
Okay, well, that's all right.
And basically, I felt that the PD hasn't handled this whole matter from day one properly. I think that my brother-in-law is getting screwed, but besides that, I was there at the day that he was actually being arrested, and the conversations that he had with the sergeant at the scene and everything else, but that's what I'm going to be testifying to.
Okay. Well, what did you witness? Did you witness the incident?
Uh, I didn't witness the incident.
Okay, so you arrived there after the incident had occurred? Is that correct?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Well, did you talk to anybody on the scene? Did you talk to any of the officers or Mr. Yusefian?
Yes, yes, of course.
Okay. Which officers did you talk to?
Uh, I rather actually, do I have to talk to you about this?
You don't have to do anything, sir.
Yes, thanks. Do you know who I am?
Do I know who you are?
Yeah, I was used to be a civil service commissioner for eight years in the city fund, though.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm aware of that, but what does that have to do with this, sir?
Uh, it has nothing to do with it. I'm just telling you that I think that you guys have really, really, really botched this entire investigation, but that's all I'm going to tell you at this point.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. You have really what?
I said that you guys have botched this entire investigation. That's all I want to say about that.
Oh, okay. All right, well, everybody has their own opinion, you know, I'm not...
Of course, of course, of course.
But you're telling me you were at the scene, you're telling me you saw something or said something, you know, I'd like to know about that, if you want to tell me.
I will testify to it at the trial.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Bye-bye.
Less than four hours after that call was made, Mr. Abkarian sent an email to then-city attorney Scott Howard. I'd like to read the complaint to you, and we have it available for display so people can read along.
One second. Sorry, Jason, this will take a second.
Do you mind scrolling down a little? Up?
Up?
I'll just read it from there. A little easier to read than my current...
Right up there, Jason. It's on the main screen.
Thank you. This email was to Scott Howard, the city attorney. It says, "Dear Mr. Scott, I am filing this complaint with you in the hope that you will direct it to either the Chief of Police or the appropriate department. I received a call from Detective Kambikian in connection with my testimony on the case of my brother-in-law, Robert Yusefian. He stated that he is calling from the police department and wanted to know what my testimony will be at trial. He also asked about my relationship with Mr. Yusefian. I told him that he is my brother-in-law and that he wanted me to testify on his behalf. Mr. Kambikian seemed to be agitated and told me that he needs to know what my testimony will be. I stated that I do not want to answer any of his questions and asked him if I am required to respond. He stated, 'No.' However, he stated that he should know what my testimony will be and continued to ask questions. He asked if I was a witness to the incident, and I answered, 'No.' He asked if I was at the scene, and I told him, 'Yes.' At this time, I felt that he was bullying me and trying to intimidate me. I told him that I will not be intimidated, and I told him that I am a former commissioner with the Civil Service Commission. I only said this to have him stop questioning me and tell him that I know the rules. He did not stop and asked me the names of officers at the scene, the sergeant at the scene, and asked me what I know. At this point, as I was very upset in the middle of a lunch appointment, I told him that I think he did not do a very good investigation, and he will hear what I have to say during trial. He seemed to be very upset. I disconnected the call. I want to file a complaint against Detective Kambikian, as I felt that the only reason for his call was to intimidate me. It is very unfortunate that I am an attorney... Excuse me, it is very fortunate that I am an attorney and served in the Civil Service Commission. I'm not sure if I was a regular witness, if I would continue testifying for defendant with this type of intimidate. I am ready to discuss his issue with your office or the Chief of Police if necessary." As you can see, within a matter of a few hours, Mr. Abkarian took it upon himself to levy accusations against Detective Kambikian that are very serious. For the layperson out there, the act of dissuading or intimidating a witness is a crime in California, prosecutable as a felony, and one that could certainly cost a detective his job. He alleged that Detective Kambikian was bullying him and trying to intimidate him. Mr. Abkarian said that his response to Detective Kambikian was to tell him, and I quote, "I will not be intimidated," and that he only told him this so Detective Kambikian would stop questioning him. Mr. Abkarian described Detective Kambikian's demeanor in this alleged attempt to intimidate him, as, and I quote, "agitated," and then later, in his complaint, said Detective Kambikian, and I quote, "seemed to be very upset." Mr. Abkarian said in his closing remarks that he wanted to file a complaint against Detective Kambikian, and I quote yet again, "The only reason for his call was to intimidate him." This observation is clearly puzzling, since Mr. Abkarian is an attorney and would surely understand what a witness list is and its importance in preparing for trial, since he apparently has represented several parties in bringing lawsuits against the city of Glendale. Detective Kambikian even spelled this out when he told Mr. Abkarian he was calling all the witnesses to find out what their testimony concerned. Mr. Abkarian said it was fortunate he was an attorney and served on the Civil Service Commission prior, because if he was a "regular witness," he was not sure if he would, and I quote, "continue testifying for the defendant with this type of intimidate." The city attorney directed the Chief of Police, who then directed the lieutenant in charge of Internal Affairs, to open an investigation into this complaint, and that investigation has remained on Detective Kambikian's record until this day. Thankfully, Detective Kambikian recorded this conversation. The police department's Internal Affairs Division and the chief at the time both apparently came to the same conclusion I did when I heard this audio recording and read his complaint. It was such a gross and exaggerated misrepresentation of what transpired that could only be described as untruthful. As a result, it was classified as unfounded. According to our manual, that classification means the investigation disclosed that the act did not occur. Mr. Abkarian, however, did not stop there. A few weeks later, on July 6th, he was called to testify as a defense witness in the trial. He was sworn in under oath and testifying in a criminal proceeding. If we could please display the transcripts from the trial and go to page 10. This is an official transcription of the jury trial I referenced earlier. On page 10, line 20... Line 20 begins a line of questioning where the district attorney asked Mr. Abkarian if he was contacted by Detective Kambikian in this matter. As you can see, the immediate response was, "He tried to intimidate me." As the DA in the case continued to speak, Albert continued by saying, "By calling me and telling me that if I don't speak with him..." And he is then cut off by the DA. "Earlier, I asked you to pay attention to any threats or ultimatums in the phone call. I heard none when I listened to it, and yet here, just a few weeks later, apparently Mr. Abkarian remembered Detective Kambikian calling him to intimidate him, and that if he didn't, which certainly sounds like a threat or ultimatum, neither of which did I hear in that recording." On page 13, under direct examination by the defense attorney, Mr. Abkarian was asked what Detective Kambikian told him. On line 6, Mr. Abkarian said Detective Kambikian told him he had a right to know what he was going to testify to. Mr. Abkarian then said he got upset because he thought he was trying to intimidate him to change his testimony or do something else. So again, on line 12, Mr. Abkarian remembers having to cite his position as a Civil Service Commissioner and telling Detective Kambikian, "You can't intimidate me." But according to his testimony, Detective Kambikian continued, and Mr. Abkarian had to plead with the detective by saying, "Please, just don't. Just stop. I don't want to talk to you. I don't to do anything. I'm at a lunch appointment." On page 14, line 10, defense counsel asked him for any other reason he felt Detective Kambikian intimidated him. Mr. Abkarian again reiterated that had he not been an attorney or Civil Service Commissioner, but he was again interrupted by the DA. He would later go on to testify, line 27, that Detective Kambikian's tone of voice was "very aggressive." Thankfully, we had a recording to dispute these allegations. That recording was played in court to impeach Mr. Abkarian's testimony as a character witness at that time, and also declare Detective Kambikian's good name. I would argue that the recording has as much value today in this setting as it did back then, as I think it brings up serious questions about Mr. Abkarian's feelings towards law enforcement and his credibility. This is not the only issue that has arisen between Mr. Abkarian and members of the Glendale Police Department. While sitting as a traffic court judge, he heard testimony from a member of the community who was issued a citation. The offender said that the officer told him he would be arrested if he continued to refuse to sign a citation. Mr. Abkarian asked the officer if he said that, and when the officer confirmed that he did indeed tell the man of the consequences for refusing to sign a promise to appear, Mr. Abkarian decided to breach the normal decorum of a courtroom and proceeded to tell the officer that he disagreed with his handling of the incident and called into question the officer's potential motive for behaving in such a way, insinuating, according to two officers in court, Officers Rico and Officers Trudeau, that the officer was racially biased. The unnecessary commentary was so offensive and out of the ordinary, the court clerk and bailiff called the two officers back into court as they were leaving, since Mr. Abkarian had left the bench, and they proceeded to apologize for his comments on behalf of the courtroom's employees. The officers then proceeded to report the incident to police management and ultimately met with a member of the city attorney's office because it was so concerning. That officer told me for months he was fearful of testifying in that courtroom where Mr. Abkarian was on the bench. In another courtroom incident, Officer Fletcher testified to issuing a seatbelt ticket while working a grant-funded nationwide clicker ticket shift. After testifying, Mr. Abkarian made the remark that it must have been a slow day in Glendale. Why is any of this important? Since I've quoted Mr. Abkarian so much this evening, I'll continue to quote him. According to a letter written to the Glendale News Press by Mr. Abkarian on February 23rd, 2013, "In favor of a civilian oversight police commission," and I quote, "The Glendale City Charter has given power of employee disciplines and other employee matters to the Glendale Civil Service Commission. This is the only commission named in the city charter that has the power to act on employee issues and discipline. Even he recognizes that the power of employee disciplinary matters rests with the Glendale Civil Service Commission. Having said that, I question whether someone who has filed an unfounded complaint against a police officer, later testifying under oath to the same allegations, and who has made disparaging comments to our police officers while sitting as a bench officer in the court, is suitable to sit on a commission that oversees employee discipline. His interactions with our officers has resulted in us being here in opposition to his appointment." To us, his bias in issues are clear, but what other biases might exist? Since his law firm has brought at least a handful of lawsuits against the city that I've been made aware of, I can only imagine what other preconceived opinions he might bring to the table, calling into question whether any employee would receive an impartial review of discipline brought before him. I'll lend this by quoting yet another letter to the Glendale News Press written by Mr. Abkarian on May 11th, 2011. His letter was a response to commission appointments made by a prior council member that were publicly questioned and scrutinized in the news press. He wrote, "The City Council voted a few years ago to allow each City Council member to nominate their commission candidates. The council understood that once a candidate is elected to the office by his constituents, he or she has a duty to follow through with his or her promises made during the campaign. The most important venue to address that change is in nominating individuals with the same viewpoint to city commissions. Other council members should respect his nominations and not unfairly discount the vote of constituents requesting change in the city." I'm not asking you to respect Councilmember Garpetian's nominations. Those are Mr. Abkarian's words. I am asking you to consider, based on what you've heard here today, whether or not you can in good faith disregard the issues we've raised here tonight and put them on a commission that oversees employee disciplinary matters. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards on this issue. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Abkarian has served on civil service, and as far as I know, served very honorably. But I am also very concerned about a lack of trust by the very people that the Civil Service Commission oversees going forward. So to me, I'm going to be voting against the appointment, not because I think Mr. Abkarian necessarily has done anything wrong. I do not know. I don't even want to venture an opinion about that, but it's essential for this commission to function properly, that the employees see the decisions that are made as being fair and unbiased. And clearly, in this case, there's a very valid concern raised, a concern that the employees feel is valid, and I think that we need to respect that and make sure that whoever's appointed is somebody in whom the decisions will be respected and not questioned in terms of their motives by the commissioner. Thank you.
I'll make a short comment also. As my colleague just indicated, Mr. Abkarian has served on the Civil Service Commission in the past and has apparently done so very well. The situation with the complaint against Officer Kambikian is obviously not a good one, not a pleasant one, not the best moment, but it happened within a context of very... Not to justify it, but it did happen within the context of a very tense situation where a police officer had crossed every ethical and unethical line, and we don't want to get into the details, but everyone knows what that's about. And again, that was a long time ago. It happened. I'm willing to believe in Mr. Abkarian that, as in the past, as a Civil Service Commissioner in the past, he will do his job properly and will be extremely fair to everyone involved. In terms of the lawsuits against the city of Glendale, you know, that's sort of the reality of anyone practicing law in the city of Glendale, where it's not a large enough city where, you know, you can file lawsuits against other... Or, you know, where you have so many choices in life, where you're necessarily insulated from having to file lawsuits against the city for clients, for clients who may or may not have valid claims. What I'm trying to say is that you're in Glendale, a client comes and has a legitimate claim against the city of Glendale, you're a practicing attorney in Glendale, you file a lawsuit. I don't know that that necessarily indicates any ill will towards the city or its employees. So having said that, again, with some concern, with some reservation, I will support his nomination and believe that he will perform his obligations honorably and properly.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Garpetian?
Well, I really appreciate the GPO as President being here tonight and voicing your concern about the nomination, but I'll tell you this much, I don't want to turn this into a court trial, that somebody's on trial here today. I don't want to go over all the items that was discussed in a trial that we were not in and try to defend the items that was brought up tonight. Just to be fair, my nomination is based on my trust, my personal knowledge of Mr. Abkarian, and his great reputation in the community, in his business life and his family life. And most importantly, it's based on facts. Mr. Abkarian is a licensed California attorney who is also admitted to practice in United States District Court, Central District, United States Court of Appeals, Ninth Circuit, California Supreme Court, and United States Supreme Court. Mr. Abkarian was awarded the Super Lawyer by Los Angeles Magazine, Top 100 Trial Lawyers by National Trial Lawyers Association, Premier 100 by American Academy of Trial Lawyers. He was voted Best of Glendale by U.S. National Chamber of Commerce. He was a former board member of California State Osteopathic Medical Board, and the list goes on and on. And he served as a former president of Glendale Health and Kid and volunteer many countless hours to help local charities. Past 15 years, he has been serving as a volunteer temporary judge for Los Angeles Superior Courts. And his voting records indicate his fairness, and that's what I'm basing my nomination on, as being a volunteer court judge, or when he served as a Civil Service Commission. I don't want to bring any names, but he was the reason that one of the board members of GPOA here was brought back to his profession, and he was not fired. So he helped... This notion that there is something else going on, it does not... It's not based off my facts that I have. With that, I want to stop here, because again, I don't want to turn this into a court of law and try to counter or defend Mr. Abkarian here, because he's not here, and I don't think he should have been here, but with that, I stop and ask for a vote.
Any other final comments? If not, then let's take the roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Devine?
I will vote to support Councilmember Garpetian's nomination with the assurance that he feels, that Councilmember Garpetian feels, that Mr. Abkarian is not biased and that he's qualified candidate.
If I didn't feel that way, I wouldn't have you nominated.
Councilmember Friedman?
No.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Aaron Najarion?
I abstain. Next item, please.
Item 3C, which is not on the agenda. I believe there's a presentation that...
Yes, we have a presentation by the Hoover PTA.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Ochoa, Mr. Garcia, Police Chief, and staff. My name is Armac Avadisian. I'm 37 years resident of Glendale, or Glendalian. I am here today on behalf of Hoover High School PTA and Hoover High School Tour of Homes, which is our annual 58-year service to our school and our students. With me, I have our President, Adrien O'Shawian, and some of our board members and volunteers that serve on the tour for many years. This tour takes place for 58 years. This year is going to be in December 12th, from 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning till about 3 o'clock. If no one knows about the tour, I would suggest you to go on Hoover's website and click on the PTA, and you can study more about the tour. It's a great system, great program that we do, and we support our students with scholarships for the 12th graders, and also last two years, we have decided to support every class grade for the school from ninth grade throughout, and supporting the school wherever needs the students have. So in the last few years, every year, we have raised our income, our fundraising from a few years back, when I took over, it was $8,000. We took it to $13,000 of income. Last year, our fundraising went up to $23,000, and this year, our goal is to $30,000. So I hope with support of our Hoover parents, Hoover students, and our team and volunteers, we're going to achieve that. Of course, with that, it comes with all the community members, the city, members of the council, and the staff, that we can do that. Last year, many of you know already that our honorary chair... Every year, we have an honorary chair. Last year's honorary chair was one and only Mr. Ochoa, which is now a Hoover parent. So thank you and welcome to our parenthood. We're going to make you a PTA member also. Without going forward, I'm going to stop here. We have a small gift for Mr. Ochoa that he wasn't aware of, that just a small token of appreciation to Mr. Ochoa, that he lent his name to us, he named his picture to us, and we used it and abused it in order for us to fundraise for the school. And I say it with greater confidence, because we did it for the good cause, and we did it for the school and our students.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for... I assure you, he didn't know anything about this. With that, continuing on, as I said, every year, we have an honorary chair. This year, we have decided and we have chosen none other than one of our own, City Council members, our last year's mayor, Mr. Zares Sinanian. That is going to be our honorary chair for 2015, 16-year. I invite every staff member and the community to participate and help us and do whatever we can do to make this tour even better. We have selected four beautiful homes, each one with a different character throughout the city, throughout Glendale, that I think every one of you would love to be present and view these homes. These are lifetime opportunities, that we get a chance to walk in these people's home and, again, use and abuse their home for a whole way in order for us to... And this process, in reality, takes a very long time. We have started this tour process, I have started, from January 2nd of 2015. We've already started processing and programming this tour, and we're right now, we're in a great place, that we're announcing the tour, the date of tour, and our honorary chair, Mr. Sinanian. I thank you very much for your support.
Does Mr. Sinanian accept?
I do accept. May I say a few words, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. So thank you very much. I'm very excited and very honored to be able to be Chair of Hoover Tour of Homes. It's a great tradition since 1957, which serves a fantastic purpose of helping our Hoover High School students and specifically the seniors in their future endeavors, college and whatever expenses they may have. Now, I'm a future Hoover parent, as you all know, and I don't want to limit sort of the pool of participants just to Hoover parents. I think we should go beyond and look at Toll and Keppel, families and parents also, because again, their kids are potential Hoover... Hoover kids, so I think we can do a lot of good, I have big shoes to fill. Mr. Ochoa, when he does things, he does them very well, and this was obviously no difference, as you indicated, through the numbers that were raised last year. So let's put our hands together and our minds together and raise more money, but I wouldn't use that word "abuse" other people's homes too much, because...
In a good way.
Next year, yeah, no, I know.
In a good way.
Next year, people may not, they may get the wrong idea and may not contribute their homes to the tour. But all jokes aside, thank you to everyone who's made their homes available for this fantastic purpose, we're very grateful, and thank you to all the parents that are going to be participating in this.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
With that, we have, just so you know, the tour itself, the process, the programming and everything else, it takes over 60, 70 volunteers, including about 40 students from the schools that are going to be the docents. So there is, it really takes a lot of community work and volunteer work in order to get this tour done and put it together. So with that, we have also small gifts for each one of you, as something that hopefully motivate you down the road to make sure, once we knock on your door and ask for help for the tour, you'll be more than open to accept our invitation and help us get to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armac, I have a mayor's commendation for you, in recognition of your dedication and commitment towards the 2014-2015 Hoover, actually, it'd be 2015-2016 Hoover High School Tour of Homes. Thank you for supporting the success of our students, I commend your investment of time and effort to raising funds for graduating Hoover seniors and disadvantaged students in all grade levels. On behalf of the City of Glendale, we wish you continued success on all of your future endeavors, and let me ask the honorary chair to reunite with his committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I want to hand it to our President, it's her right. I am the chair of the committee, but she is the president, she is the boss, she is my boss.
It really is, it's a team, so thank you.
Definitely, it's a teamwork. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, staff, thank you, Mr. Ochoa, and thank you, community, please participate and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, before we go on to the next item, there's an announcement that I would like to make, and that is to remind everyone that the 22nd Annual Cruise Night, which was canceled earlier this summer because of rain, will be held this Saturday, August 29th, on Brand Boulevard. The main stage will be at Brandon Milford, this is a free event for everyone, and it starts at 5:30 PM. The live entertainment includes Jumpin' Jack Flash, which I believe is a Stones tribute band, The Smooth Sounds of Santana, and The Shantays. And to top it off, there will be a fireworks finale at 10:30 PM. Brand Boulevard is completely closed off, there will be hundreds of antique and vintage and collector cars there for display, the restaurants are open out onto the sidewalk, plenty of booths and foods and displays by all different city departments as well as community groups, so it's a great event to attend, 5:30 this Saturday on Brand Boulevard. So hope to see everyone there. And let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next item, item 4 on the consent, are the consent items, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
Okay, I have a request to pull item 4C, 4F, 4K, 4O. Are there any other requests from council? Pull items? If not, will someone move the balance of the consent calendar?
Some will.
Second. Let's take roll call for the items not pulled. Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanayan?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian? Yes. Let's go to item 4C.
Item 4C is Director of Public Works regarding Shoal Canyon Landfill Slope Repair Project, specification number 3577, C1 is a motion awarding a construction contract to Los Angeles Engineering, Inc. in the amount of $385,000.
Okay, I have three speakers, I'm going to afford you each two minutes, Eileen Hatrick, Jerry Rankin, and Mike Mohill.
Good evening, thank you. I probably don't need to speak if I don't know what the conversation was going to be before, because I wanted to ask a question about this item C on the agenda, I, well, maybe I'll just ask the question, is there any information that can be given at this point about Shoal Canyon and the expansion of it, or the reason for this item, because that would relate to what I'd have to say. I came here mainly for that, and I, now that it's pulled, I have no idea where it's going, what the update is, could anyone speak to that?
Well, if you have a particular question, we can ask staff to answer, but we can't open it back up for a back and forth conversation. So do you have any other questions besides the status?
I don't, I will express, since I'm up here and I drove all the way here, I will express my concern about the expansion, and I'm assuming this council will be discussing this over the year. I have a strong concern about the expansion, I live in the area, there is a very big park right next to the Shoal Canyon dump site, and we know that the environmental impact report shared that the particulates in that area are much higher than the general area, and because of all the children that play in that area, and because of the neighborhood, this is a grand concern of mine, that it's going to be expanded instead of closed, as it was supposed to be in 2021. So those are my comments, but I guess I should come back at another time to hear what an update is?
Well, we are going to be having, actually, a work boot Tuesday, actually, at the canyon itself, where it would be a great opportunity for you and the residents, not only to see the landfill in operation, but also to ask questions and listen to precise explanation of the future of the landfill and the current operation. But that being said, you're certainly entitled to get an explanation as to this item that's before us today. So if there's nothing else, I'll ask you to sit down, and we can hear from the city engineer, excuse me, you used to be the city engineer, the public works director, and if there's any questions after this meeting, you're certainly entitled to shoot an email to Mr. Galanian, he'll be happy to respond. So can you tell us, let's talk about this item in particular, what is this about?
If only to say that this is not the EIR, and that this is part of the city's obligation to maintain this facility, whether it's open or closed, we have an obligation to maintain the integrity of the facility. In terms of the slope repair, I'll have Rubik give you a brief overview of it.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as Mr. Ochoa indicated, the item before you tonight is regarding the closed portion of the landfill, an active site, where due to continuous sunlight exposure of the irrigation and the surface water drainage facilities have been damaged, have, there is a need of repair so that we can keep a sufficient level of vegetation on the slope and prevent further degradation of the slopes.
It has nothing to do with the question that was raised with respect to the ongoing environmental impact report process that, as you indicated, sir, will be largely the subject of the work boot Tuesday on September 15th at Shoal Canyon, the details will be forthcoming. And the decision point for the council, we anticipate late October, early November on the EIR.
Okay, very good. Eileen Hatrick?
That was you, I'm sorry.
Good evening, I'm Jerry Rankin, resident of Glen Oaks Canyon and member of the board of the Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association. The $385,000 contract for slope repair at the Shoal Canyon landfill illustrates the fact that while the landfill takes care of our waste, it is not an unmitigated blessing. It presents cost to the city and its residents, and that the $385,000 price is only one small part of the cost. The landfill is located in a geographically fragile area, on top of a network of earthquake faults. Toxic materials are stored in the landfill. The main defenses against these toxins are located in or near Lower Shoal Park that the one before me referred to. That is where barriers, test wells, and extraction wells have been constructed. I go to the park at least once a week in the early morning, I frequently find city or county workers there at the extraction or test wells, and lately at the swampy area behind the small flood control dam just west of the park. I'm reassured that a lot of people are working hard to try to keep us safe from the pollutants that could escape from the landfill, especially during heavy rainfalls or during an earthquake. I trust the slope repair project will help as well. Someday, hopefully sooner rather than later, the landfill will be closed, and we shall adopt a better, safer way of disposing of our waste. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, my name is Mike Mohill. I'm a resident of Glen Oaks Canyon, and I don't want to sound redundant of my colleague who spoke beforehand, but I recall 37 years ago, when I moved up to Glen Oaks Canyon, I complained to the city many, many times of the methane gas that was around my home. They kept telling me, "We're working on it, and we're working on it, and we're working on it." Finally, they worked on it. It was methane gas. It's considered a carcinogen, I'm told. I'm also told that in a few years from now, the landfill is supposed to be closed, according to an agreement made with the resident, county, city, et cetera. I'm glad we are going ahead and maintaining the landfill right now, but any type of expansion would be not in the best interest of the residents of Glen Oaks Canyon. One resident talked about the fact that the landfill is insecure geographically. We've had some scientists go up there and say, "Please don't go ahead and make it any higher, the landfill, because it's not safe." I'm not a geologist or a scientist, I count on them, but I always like to work on caution, I'm conservative in my viewpoints, and if someone says, "Hey, there's going to be a problem down the road, lest not go forward," I think we should listen to these experts. Remember, you may not live in the canyon, but there are thousands of people who, and they count on you, you go every time there's an election, and you seek our votes, well, why don't you make sure you keep us safe, because you wanted our votes. Thank you.
Thank you, I have no other speakers for item 4C. Is there a motion for 4C?
So, again, it's just a maintenance project, so I'll just move it forward, I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, seconded by, thank you. Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanayan?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Please read item 4F.
4F is Director of Public Works regarding request to state of California for new sustainable funding for state and local transportation infrastructure. F1 is resolution urging the state of California to provide new sustainable funding for state and local transportation infrastructure, choose a motion authorizing the mayor to sign advocacy letter supporting new sustainable funding for transportation infrastructure in state legislature special session.
I have a card from Mike Mohill.
Good evening, councilmembers, name is Mike Mohill. I like grant funding as a supplement, but not as the primary source of the revenue. In this case, we're talking about maintenance of roads, are we not? And our roads are crumbling. 10 years ago, when Councilman Najarian came aboard about that time, 50% of the sales tax went for the infrastructure of our roads. Three years ago, 16% of the sales tax, today, 0%. Grant funding is wonderful as a supplement. The question is, where has all the money gone? Artie, would you please show my PowerPoint? 80%...
Which slide did you, okay, no, wait.
80%, there you go. The fire in the police department, God bless them all, they're good people.
Mr. Mohill, this is not relevant to the item...
This is where the money is going to, Council, Mayor Najarian...
But that's not the issue before...
Because we have no money for the roads, we take that money for the roads in the general fund, and we pass it towards the salaries and the pensions.
Yeah, actually, that's not how the revenue sharing between the budgets goes, sir, as you all know, so if you want to move forward, certainly we can, and the speaker says nothing about the degradation of the gas tax and those revenues that really have impacted road maintenance in this entire nation, let alone the city.
But what are we doing with our general fund money? We can use general fund money for the roads, why don't we?
Mr. Mohill, we encourage people to come forth to speak on items that are on the consent calendar and other items, but your comments have to be germane and relevant to the actual issue before us.
In my opinion, sir, it is, because...
Well, not in mine.
Okay, well, it's a matter of opinion, that's true.
You're certainly welcome.
But when I see grant funding as a supplement and not the primary source of funding for our needs, for our primary sources, for our schools, for our roads, our libraries and our roads, something's wrong here, and the question to be asked is, where is all the money going?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Is there a motion for 4F?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanayan?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Please read 4K.
4K is Director of Community Development regarding FTA Section 5310 grant funding for dial-a-ride vehicles. K1 is motion authorizing city manager or his designate to execute agreement and documents related to the FTA Section 5310 grant funding awards and vehicle procurements. K2 is resolution appropriating for FTA Section 5310 grant funds and city measure R local return transit grant matching funds.
Councilmembers, my name is Mike Mohill. Dial-a-ride, how is that being funded? Let's see, about 90% is federal money, grant funded, and 10% is Measure R, which is shared by the city. Where is the general fund money being used for dial-a-ride? Nothing. Dial-a-ride is a federal and a city-county operation. My concern is, why don't we use our money? We're using it for the salaries and the pensions of our union workforce, 80%. Grant funding is wonderful as a supplement. Some people call grant funding nothing but welfare for failed cities. Thank you.
Thank you, I have no other cards, is there a motion for 4K?
It's all moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanayan?
Yes.
And Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please read 4O.
4O is Director of Finance regarding recommendation to enter into an agreement with the State Board of Equalization to implement and collect prepaid wireless utility users tax per the AB 171701, is a resolution authorizing city manager to execute certain documents required by the Board of Equalization to collect the city's utility users tax on prepaid wireless service. O2 is resolution authorizing the examination of prepaid mobile telephone... O2 is Resolution Authorizing the Examination of Prepaid Mobile Telephone and Vehicle Services Surcharge and Local Charge Records by the City and Its Consultant.
I don't have any cards on this item. Just kidding, Mr. Mohill. Come on up. I was just seeing if you were awake. Mike Mohill.
Thought you pulled my chain, didn't you? Well, I caught you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Mohill. This is the Utilities Users Tax. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, here we go again, taxes and more taxes. You know, they tax me in the morning, they tax me in the evening, they tax me at lunchtime, they tax me at break time. Why do they keep taxing me? Now, they tell me, according to the Utilities Users Petition that I have in front of me, and I hope the public will sign, is because the money is supposed to go for, you know, let's see, what does it say here, for example? Services for seniors, fire and protection, libraries, parks, maintenance. But you know, when 80% of the general fund goes for salaries and pensions of our Fire and Police Department, there's nothing left. So what do they do? They have this thing called the Utilities Users Tax, and they want to get more money from us, folks. Ladies and gentlemen, you see my name up there, Mike Mohill? That's my Gmail email account and my phone number. Please sign the petition and circulate it and let other people have the choice to put it on the ballot, because it requires the voters to approve this, not the city council. So ladies and gentlemen, please contact me and others who are circulating this petition to repeal the Utilities Users Tax. Remember, the primary use of this tax goes not for us, it goes for the pensions of our salaries and our pensions of our union workforce. Thank you.
Mr. Mohill, could I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Who's the group behind the petition?
Who's the group? Well, we have several names here. Will Intaldi Fiero in Glendale, Ken Landon in Glendale, you remember him, I'm sure, and John Vorse from Lockwood.
Isn't there a group who's funding this effort?
A group?
Yeah.
There are a group of people who got together to make this possible, Mrs. Friedman. This is all legal. You should know that.
No, no, I know it's legal.
I know you don't like it.
I know it's legal, but the petition that I saw that's being circulated for the Utility Users Tax to repeal in Glendale...
Yes.
Was being circulated by the Tea Party, by T-PAC, so I just...
Is there something wrong with the T-PAC people? Is there something wrong with the Democratic Party?
I just...
I mean, I know you belong to the Democratic Party, so why do you bring up the Tea Party?
Mr. Mohill, I absolutely believe in transparency...
Okay, let's talk about... Why don't you tell the public that you belong to the far-left side of the Democratic Party?
Mr. Mohill...
Okay. Well, she brought it up, Mr. Najarian.
She did. She did ask you a question, and I did afford you the opportunity.
And I said, yes, the T-PAC is supporting it.
Mr. Mohill, I guarantee that you will be speaking more during this council meeting than I will, and you'll have more chance to speak. But let me just say a few words. You can sit down.
Mr. Mohill, please have a seat.
Okay, fine. Folks, don't forget the Utilities Users Tax. This is your opportunity to tell the city council that you no longer want to pay their taxes. Thank you again.
I just, I do believe in transparency, and I think people have a right to know what groups are behind any petitions that people are being asked to sign. So I just wanted the public to be aware that this, as far as I know, this petition, which is being circulated through many communities in Southern California, is being funded by the Tea Party, just so people understand that. Thank you.
Okay, and I just want to, we talked about a lot of things, but this is about authorizing the city manager to work with the State Board of Equalization to permit us to obtain the Utility Users Tax on the prepaid phone cards for the cell phones, which are now becoming quite popular. And otherwise, there is a tax loss on that sort of purchase of the prepaid card. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, there's a seepage of the revenue away because the market is changing, technology has changed, and so now you have these prepaid's that are out there. And as a result, this community doesn't realize the benefit of that. In this case, the Board of Equalization is helping to remedy that if we are willing to enter into the agreement. So it's not nearly as nefarious as what you might have suspected based on the comments.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Garpetian.
When is our next budget update?
You will have first quarter update in November.
November. I encourage public to either watch it or attend it, so we all will have a better understanding as to how our enterprise funds work, how many different funds do we have, and where is the money coming from and where is it going? Because we don't have only one fund, we have several funds, that our budget is not just $80 million or $100 million, it's a lot more than that, it's over $800 million. So I encourage everyone to attend it, and let's publicize it heavily so the public will know when is it. So we will answer most of these questions at that budget study as to Utilities Users Tax. Where is it being used for? How are we spending that money? And they came to my door, and I asked a couple of questions, and they didn't have the answers for it. They came to collect signatures, and I just asked a few questions as to what can we do if we don't have this? And there was no answer for it. But I want to make sure that public knows when is our next budget study and/or update, and they will follow it and attend it. And ask every question that you can ask, because that's the right venue for it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So this is item 4O. If there's no other comments, will someone move 4O?
It's all moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpedian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
And let's move on to the next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Before I go to my colleagues, I would like to announce some bad news, and that is the passing of former mayor Robert Garson. And I will request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in his memory. Robert Garson was born in South Boston, Massachusetts, on December 18, 1928. In 1931, the Great Depression took Mr. Garson across country for a projectionist job at a new company in Hollywood called Technicolor. In 1951, Bob began law school at USC, but shortly thereafter joined the Navy, where he spent the next 19 years in active and reserve duty, eventually retiring as a lieutenant commander of the USS Whedon, a Buckley-class destroyer escort with the Pacific Fleet. In 1955, Bob returned to USC and finished law school. After graduation from USC in 1958, he joined the LA County Council's office and later the Hollywood law firm of Ursfeld, Ursfeld and Younger. After many years at Ursfeld, he became general counsel to home builder M.J. Brock &amp; Sons, and later helped found Greystone Homes. After taking Greystone public, it was acquired by Lenar Homes, where Bob remained general counsel until his retirement in 2009. Bob was passionate about serving his community, and along the way aided his beloved city of Glendale as the chairman of its Board of Zoning Adjustments, and was elected to serve eight years as a city council member, and twice served as its mayor in 1978 and 1982. He also served as president of the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority for an unprecedented 18 years. Bob was an occasional golfer, an expert handball player, a sport he pursued twice a work, twice a week from childhood until just three years ago. Over the years, Bob traveled to Mexico, Cuba, Peru, Canada, Japan, Panama, Costa Rica, Egypt, Israel, Jordan, China, Grenada, and others, as well as most of the U.S. states. Bob is survived by his wife Misty, his two sons, Carrie and Tom, from his former wife Jane, his daughters Kimberly Bales, Leslie Bales, and granddaughters Holly and Agniska. We will adjourn in his memory. Other announcements?
I would just like to take a brief moment, because I know we have a heavy agenda. I just would like to briefly address my recent trip with Councilmember Garpedian to Yerevan, Armenia for the Pan-Armenian Games. I want to thank Home and Land Management, the ARAT chapter, for the opportunity and the invitation, especially Armek Bahimian, Tomek Abrahanian, and Rubina Menochin for their leadership while we were there. The trip proved to be informative, proved to be enlightening, and rewarding. The athletes competed courageously and made all the coaches and the parents very proud. So I want to thank everyone that made it possible for this journey, including the city of Glendale. And I would like to also thank Councilmember Garpedian for his help and assistance to me on the trip. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian.
Yes, on the same note, I want to thank Home and Land Management as well for the invitation. And Pan-Armenian Games was a very successful event. We had over 6,500 athletes from all over the world, and that gives the athletes the opportunity to meet other athletes from different countries and get to know each other. And with the social media these days, it's very easy to keep in touch. We had an unfortunate incident, and one of our athletes passed away on an ATV accident, and it just basically changed the mood, if you can imagine, the entire games, for us at least. And I want to ask, Mr. Mayor, next meeting to be adjourned in the memory of Levon Tomas, and I will bring his resume next time to read for everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
I'll simply mention that Mr. Mayor and myself and Mr. Kasachen were at the funeral for the young man, and he'll be missed as not only a resident of Glendale, but an employee of the city of Glendale.
Thank you.
Okay. And I will not have any other comments. Let's move to the next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the next item is Community Event Announcements. This is a three-minute portion.
I have a card from Roberta Medford and Matt Gange.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Unfortunately, Matt couldn't be here tonight, so it's just me. And if you could please put up the flyer. I am here as the president of Glendale Beautiful to, once again, invite the entire community and everyone here on the dais to our upcoming annual fall fundraiser, and I think the flyer's coming up. This, I noticed the Hoover Group said that they started their tours in 1957. Five years before that, in 1950, Glendale Beautiful started their annual, these annual dinners, and were proceeding on. We're the group that does the luminarias at the Casa Adobe de San Rafael. In the spring, we promote and coordinate the Arbor Day tree donations, and we do the beautification awards to honor properties in Glendale that are particularly nice and to help keep our city the beautiful city that it is. The fundraiser will be, and, excuse me, this fundraiser, our annual fundraiser, specifically supports the docent program at the Casa Adobe, which we want to expand and refine, and that takes money. Wednesday, September 9, is the fundraiser. It starts at 5:30 and with snacks and music, and it is held at the Casa Adobe, which is on Dorothy Drive in Glendale, as you see there. In the wonderful event of rain, it'll be in the Civic Auditorium. There will be a buffet dinner at 6:00 p.m., and we think for a very reasonable cost of $30 per person, this is going to be a true fundraiser this time, because a bunch of wonderful local businesses have stepped up and are donating the food. So it's going to be much more profitable for us in the coming years. Damon's, Porto's, Dyna's Fried Chicken, and Moss supermarkets from my area in Montrose are all coming through with food, and there might be more before the event comes around. There'll be some contemporary live music that Matt got during the appetizers and socializing. And then after dinner for the program, Juan Gonzalez, Alan Lomas, and Michael Nielsen of Community Development Department will give us a nice presentation on the exciting envisioning of the CAP Park, the freeway CAP Park over the 134 between Central Avenue and Glendale Avenue. It's called Space 134. This is a fundraiser. Please bring money. There will be opportunity prizes, and we look forward very much to having greetings from the city, from the mayor, and actually to all of you being there representing the city. We really hope you can make it. The RSVPs should go to Sharon Wiseman, and her phone number is 818-248-4967. Her email is Sharon, S-H-A-R-O-N, at jetcafe, one word, dot org. And if you could please have those RSVPs in by September 2 for the event on September 9. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is this the same Glendale Clean and Beautiful that we used to have? Is it the same organization, or is it different?
No. It is not.
I'm sorry.
A wonderful, a wonderful group, but not Glendale Beautiful. And we had the name...
What is the other one called?
Bid for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale.
Yes.
Bid for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I was supposed to come back up. And no, it isn't the same.
No, no problem.
Could I have stopped you? No. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Najarian, City Council and staff, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Sharon Townsend with Glendale Healthy Kids. As a Glendale leader, you're invited to reown the health of our community, a kickoff event for a community-wide engagement to improve the health in Glendale and dial back the risk of chronic disease. The event will be held on October 28 at the Alex Theater, beginning with a VIP reception at 6 o'clock and general admission at 7. Glendale's collective impact initiative will help us come together as a community to accomplish what individual organizations cannot do by themselves. In doing so, we're forming a broad-based collaborative. For Glendale, this means working together to address the growing health risks that faces our community. To support the effort, the Glendale Healthier Coalition members recently received several large grants to address chronic disease in the city, and preliminary findings confirm our fears. Among 500 people screened so far, 50% show a high risk of diabetes, and 20% are at a high risk for cardiovascular disease. This is cause for significant concern in our community, because often, diabetes is interrelated with cancer and heart disease. Currently, the number-one cause of death in Glendale is heart disease, followed by stroke and cancer, specifically lung cancer in Glendale. And we know that diabetes impacts all of that. Working together for community health is a Glendale tradition. Past collaborations between nonprofit municipal healthcare and educational sectors have been successful. In fact, Glendale Healthy Kids came out of this 21 years ago. And because of that, over 500 children are afforded medical appointments each year and 300 units of health education. Why is this important? Because this is our community. We work here, we live here, we play here, and together we can make a difference, and we can make Glendale a healthy community. I'm really appreciative of the mayor's office and the city council for your support of this initiative. I think we need to come together and address this issue, and we are looking at a one-to-a-twenty year plan and have strategically worked out what we can do to make us a healthier community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other cards for community announcements, so we will close this portion.
Sue, Sue, Sue Jacob.
Sue, I didn't get your card.
You better let her speak, otherwise.
I didn't get your card. I don't have a card. It must have been lost in the shuffle, but Sue Jacob.
Sue, is three minutes okay?
Wait, it's still a bit quiet. I know, today's still heavy. Hello, City Council, Mayor. Good evening, my name is Susan Jacob, community volunteer, and I'm a huge fan of Ascensia, which provides services and housing to families and individuals in Glendale and neighboring communities. For more than 20 years, Glendale has had a year-round shelter for homeless families and individuals. This program, beautifully supported by hundreds of volunteers, including Kiwanis Club of Glendale, has been the lifeline for thousands of men, women, and children who otherwise would be living in cars or streets. Tonight, I'm here to remind you about the Ascensia Blues Festival this Saturday, August 29, at Rally Studios in Hollywood, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. And I know we have cruise night at the same time, but if you go to the Blues Festival first, and you'll be chill and happy, and then you end up at cruise night, it'll be a fabulous weekend. So tickets are $35 online, $40 at the gate, and we still have VIP tickets remaining at $100 each, and you can go to ascensia.org for more details. Thank you so much.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
That was the best announcement we've had all evening, I want you to know.
I have buttons for you guys.
And you can also go to urbanbluesfest.com for more information.
Yeah, that too. Thanks.
What is the charge to go?
$35 online, $40 at the gate. $35 online, $40 at the gate, or if you want like the full VIP, $40. This is like nothing for you guys.
Okay, Ms. Devine.
Yes, while Sue is still here, I just want to congratulate you because you're getting the Fire Department's Volunteer Above and Beyond Award at their awards luncheon. Well-deserved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Can't wait to see you get that award.
I was gonna ask if it would reflect badly on GFD, and if maybe they...
Okay, hold on. That was a wonderful point that Ms. Devine raised. If you'd like to respond, we want to hear it.
Yeah, come up to the microphone.
For...
I'm sorry.
posterity's sake.
Okay, so I'm really humbled that Rotary and GFD are giving me a Service Above Self Award, but it should really, if it goes to anyone, it should be my parents, but then I'm afraid that I'm a little too scary to be getting something from such a legit operation as GFD.
We'll talk to them about that.
Yes, I mean, if I could give the award to the firefighters that passed away in the fires over the summer, I would do that. So, thank you.
And thus the award.
That's very, that's very moving. Thank you, and congratulations, and everyone go to the Blues Festival at Raleigh Studios. Are there any other speakers who had submitted a card? None? Okay, then, that concludes this portion of oral communications, and let's move on to the next item. Mr. Cook.
Mayor and Council, under adoption of ordinances at 7A is an ordinance adding section R 105.3.1.2 to volume IB of the Glendale Building and Safety Code 2014, establishing an expedited permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems. This was introduced July 20, 2015 by Councilmember Friedman.
Okay, I have no cards on this item. Ms. Friedman, would you like to...
I'll move the item, and it's my understanding, this item is to make it easier for people to install solar on their rooftops in Glendale, and I hope people take advantage of it. But I know that we're going to have future presentations about ways that we can further encourage solar and make sure, I've asked staff to look at all of our rules and processes and fees and everything else to make sure we don't have any impediments to stop people from installing rooftop solar, and that we have the funding that we need to incentivize it.
I have a question.
Mr. Garpetian, and then Ms. Devine.
This does not limit the volume or the level of the kilowatt that they can apply for, does it? I mean, this is just a process...
Okay, let's have Mr. Zern answer that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Garpetian, this does not limit you from anything, but this only applies to the smaller projects. So the expedited process does not apply to some of the larger projects, but you're certainly not prohibited from pursuing those. It doesn't fall outside of our incentive program. It's just for this state law that requires you to expedite the permit, it's for the smaller, mostly residential projects.
So the expedition is for the smaller projects, so the larger projects, they can still go through, but go through the process?
Absolutely.
And there's no limit to it?
Absolutely.
Got it, thank you.
Ms. Devine.
Well, my question is about larger projects.
Yes.
What's the difference in the timing? I mean, if somebody is putting in, you know, 20 kilowatt, what, how much longer is it going? Do you have any idea?
I hope not. I don't think we have enough system for...
Oh, okay.
What happens is generally the larger projects, the way the law was put together is, is they looked at what most residential rooftop garage-type installations were, where you have little or no issues with structural, you have little or no issues with electrical hookup, it's pretty basic. You get into a bigger project where somebody wants to put it on a roof, you got to make sure it's structurally sound. You got to look at the equipment, you got to look at what's going to happen on the electrical connection, you have to look at what's going to happen to our system when you put that load on it. So all of those things take a lot more time to look at. It's really not that complicated on the residential, and the state legislatures wanted to make sure that folks didn't get put into the system. And, you know, you're in there for six weeks, if that's your permit backlog, this way they get them out, they get them out and up and performing.
Thank you.
Mr. Sinanian.
Yeah, Mr. Zern, so are we still lagging behind in terms of funding for all the homeowners who'd like to install solar systems?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Sinanian, this particular year, we had many more requests than we had funds budgeted.
Okay.
So that is why in the report that Ms. Friedman referred to, I will also have a resolution of appropriation to add another $1 million so that we can get everybody who applied this year. So that's a two-for-one kind of council report I'm going to give you.
So everyone who applied this year, yet...
We're going to cover them.
Yeah, assuming they get the permits and everything.
Correct. We're going to cover them. Not everybody always goes all the way through with it, so we'll have some people who come out, but everybody on paper should have their money.
And everyone on paper, is anyone who got on by, what was the deadline, July 1st, or?
Yes, Mr. Sinanian, we had some issues with email servers that were hiccuping and people waiting in line. That's why I just said, we'll just get everybody.
Okay.
So everybody who got it in, even if the server timestamped you, you know, a few hours later or a day later, it was in, we got it taken care of, we're going to cover everybody that was in that group.
Very good. Good news for our residents.
If there's no other comments, we have a motion by Ms. Friedman.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes, next item.
7B is ordinance amending section 4.16.0.1.0 and repealing sections 4.16.0.2.0 and 4.16.0.3.0 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to prevailing wage requirements. This was introduced on August 4, 2015 by Councilmember Sinanian. And 1 is a resolution, repealing resolution number 18626.
Mr. Sinanian, would you like to move this?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Just so we're clear, the item is 7, they had to back it separately, so 7B first will be the ordinance.
Okay, 7B is the ordinance. Let's do that first. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Okay, the next item is the resolution repealing, resolution 18626.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Underaction items, 8A, a city attorney regarding discussion of potential charter amendments pertaining increasing the size of the city council to seven members and changing the date of general municipal elections. 8A1 is a motion directing city attorney to prepare a measure to be placed on the ballot at the 2016 statewide general election. That would amend the city charter to increase the size of the city council to seven members. 8A2 is a motion directing city attorney to prepare a measure to be placed on the ballot at the 2016 statewide general election and would amend the city charter to change the date of city general municipal elections to the date of the statewide general election.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it was our intention to address these items today. However, after a discussion with the city attorney, it's come to my attention through the city attorney that there is some state legislation which may be preempting us, and I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney for a brief discussion on that, and perhaps ultimately I'd request that we continue this item to a later date.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in conjunction with the measures relating to changing the election date specifically and the overall agenda item, there are two pieces of legislation that have been working their way through the legislature, and one of them, SB 415, has been adopted by the Senate and already been approved by the Assembly, so it's awaiting governor's signature, and does potentially affect our election dates regardless of what the council does. So we, there are some, there is some analysis that we need to go into from our office to determine whether or not that law, if passed, would apply to us as a charter city. So we'd like to look at that a little bit more closely and then present that to you at a later time.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, I do have a speaker card. Would that be moot at this point, if we're going to continue the item?
In my view, it would be. You're certainly entitled to have the speaker come and present, but since we're not taking any action tonight, as I understand it, after that discussion, my suggestion would be to hold it over until we bring the item back.
Okay. The speaker is Mr. Mohill, and I will beg your indulgence, sir, to hold your comments until this comes before us for...
It's a positive.
Well, I mean, again, the issue's not worth...
Hi, Grandma, what big eyes you have.
Yeah, I mean, Mr....
Wait, wait, no.
Mr. Mayor. No, no, Mr. Mohill, thank you. No, I'm begging your indulgence.
Okay, all right.
Especially if you claim there's positive comments, please hold off, and when we bring this back, we'll be glad to hear your comments.
We needed some positive comments for tonight's agenda, Mr. Murray.
Do you need a motion?
We need a motion to continue.
Mr. Mayor, we don't. I would just suggest you take it off calendar. We anticipate bringing it back, you know, 60 days or...
Very well. 8A1 and 2 will be off calendar for now. The next item, please.
8B is Director of Public Works Regarding Security Guard Services at Various City of Glendale Locations. 8B1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and awarding a contract for security guard services at various city of Glendale locations, Cypress Security LLC, for a term of two years plus three one-year renewals for a not exceeding amount of $2,220,561 and rejecting all other bids. 8B2 is a resolution of appropriation.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir, just very quickly, and if you have any specific questions, I'm sure Mr. Galanian can answer them. We do bid out contracts on a regular basis. We did bid these contracts out. Unfortunately, as you see in your staff report, the four bids that we received were somewhat grouped, with the exception of one that was well below the others. We believe upon further analysis that that bid is incorrect. Additionally, the number-two bidder apparently has some errors with respect to their hourly rates and the overall bid, and they are deemed ultimately non-responsive. Thus, we are recommending to you Cypress Security LLC. We have experience with all three of the bidders, but at this point, based on the qualitative and quantitative review, we are recommending Cypress. So with that, Mr. Galanian or any of the staff from the facilities are here represented if you have specific questions.
Okay. I don't have any cards. Are the comments by council?
Just a quick question.
Mr. Sinanian.
I think I know the answer to this, but, so when something like this happens in the bidding process where an applicant just comes in so below what should be the fair sort of market value of the service that they're going to provide, is there a process by which we go back and we ask them, like, what happened, or no? That's a failure of their application, and that's it, they're done?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, council members, Sinanian, typically when a contractor or service provider bids so extremely low, lowballing the bid, we do connect with them, we contact them to find out the nature of their mistake. Typically, and I'm not alleging that the service provider did this, after the bid opening, they find out the rates of their competitors, and they, so now it's an open book, so they're not given an opportunity to adjust their rates so that now they are at a higher rate.
That does make sense. So moral of the story is get your bids right.
Give us your best shot. That's the purpose of the process.
Yep. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so 8B1 is the initial resolution. Separately, we can do together? Okay. Will someone move 8B1 and 2?
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Do we get 8B2, resolution of appropriation?
8C.
C.
We're at 8C.
Director of Public Works and Community Services in Parks Regarding Proposed Pacific Park Community Center Repair Project. 8C1, motion authorizing the city manager or is designated to execute professional services agreement with Elena Buick and Burz Incorporated in the amount of $480,800 plus a 10% contingency of $48,080 for the preparation of design and construction documents, contract administration, and construction observation services for the Pacific Park Community Center Repair Project.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir, from the files of No Good Deed Goes Unpunished, what you have before you with the joint park between, the joint community center and gym facility between the city and the school district at Pacific Park really has been somewhat of a cursed project, going back to its initial delivery following the inception in '01. By, shortly after the delivery in '03, we started to see defects, construction errors. This came to a head and ultimately resulted in litigation with the contractor, where the city and was, the city prevailed in the litigation. The rains of 2009 really forced the floor to buckle, the contractor then really couldn't have, didn't have much of a solution to fixing this problem, which became more and more expensive. As we moved through the litigation and ultimately to victory there and awarded a handsome sum in that process, we commenced an RFQ process to bring on the firm that is before you tonight. And so what we are asking is that we bring on this design firm that will allow us to actually finally completely fix the joint project at the Pacific Park Community Center and Gym. I must note that the amount that's available pursuant to the victory in litigation, the 3.269, we do believe it is not enough to cover everything we would like to do, but in terms of the value engineering that Mr. Galanian and his team have done, we believe that it will be the full faith and delivery of a project that was intended for the community. The items that are carried out that have been negotiated very vigorously with this vetted proponent, the ABB Group, are listed in your staff report, and if you have specific questions about that negotiation following the RFQ process, certainly Mr. Galanian can address those.
Is the school helping us out on this?
No, maybe for the litigation, I would defer to Mr. Garcia or Mr. Galanian because it's, the city has taken the lead in the project.
Okay. Okay. I'm not sure if my colleagues were around when this was going sour, but it was pretty, it was some pretty reckless construction with interior downspouts and pipes not connected and flooding all over. But I'm glad, hopefully, we'll be wrapping this up with this motion and this resolution. So is there, I have no cards from the public. Are there any questions from council? If not, I will entertain a motion at 8C1.
I'll move the item.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Thank you. Let's go to 8D.
8D, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Glendale Water and Power, GWP Power Content for Calendar Year 2014. 8D1, motion to note and file.
Mr. Zern.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are required by law by the California Energy Commission each year to give a report to our customers through our policymaking body what our power supply mixture or content for the year was, the emphasis being your renewable and the renewable portfolio standard that was passed by the legislature. Tonight, I am proud, thank you, Hon, for getting this up, to bring this very successful 2014 to you. Here is a list of the different projects in which we are involved in. So these are the specific projects that we have. This is on page two of your council report, but this is the graph we've taken and put up here. These are the various projects that we're either tied to contractually or that we are going out and purchasing on the open market. As I've talked to you before, especially when we were talking about the repowering, a lot of ours is contractually obligated already, but this particular year, we did a lot of buying on the open market because we had the ability through some long-term contracts, and we had a short year due to one contract taking over and the other one not going into effect until the end of the year. But if we can jump to the bottom part of that, this is a part I think that we're all very, very proud of. If you look here, now, this is just one year, no doubt, but look at that number for renewables, 45.4%. State law today is 33%, so we far exceeded what the 2020 goal is right here. Also, if you go to the next line, coal, 10%. Three years ago, coal in the city of Glendale was 35% of the portfolio. So through the efforts of selling our coal assets off, then turning around and taking those profits and buying cheaper renewable energy, we've been able to throw the balance of our portfolio in a very positive direction.
And Mr. Zern, if you count hydro, which is not counted as renewable for policy reasons, but which really is a renewable energy, it brings us up to 51% renewable.
Correct. Correct. And that large hydro, as Ms. Friedman said, 5.5%, which is Hoover, we get no credit for that.
And wasn't it just the beginning of the year, we were at 33%? So this is a big...
Well, yes. You know, right now, we're in the second of two compliance periods, the two mid-compliance periods, which had us at 20%, and we are there. But this is one single year, I understand, but look at the direction we're going and the trend that we have. And I'll tell you, something else here that's most important, you as a policymaking body should be extremely proud of your efforts and your direction to us. But as I stand before you today in 2015, the city of Glendale is good. 33%, we're good. Projecting forward, we don't have to do one more thing. We will make 33% without question in 2020. Now, it's a foregone conclusion that that number's going to go to 50. I think if either SB 350 or SB 645 is passed, we will go to 50%. What does that mean? That means we have seven to nine years to be very selective on the projects we go after, the ones that are most favorable to us, the ones that are in the right part of the country, where the wind does blow, or the sun does shine, or the geothermal assets are there. We are in a very, very enviable position. There are folks that don't have portfolios that look like that, that are so coal-heavy, they'll be lucky to make 2020, and they'll be buying everything that they can. We're not in that position. We are in a very, very comfortable, enviable position. And that's primarily due to the hard work of these two gentlemen right here, Lon Peters and Ramona Blake, which, by the way, there are utilities to the east and west of us that have staffs of seven, eight people who do this. That's my staff right there. They develop the project, they manage the project, they close projects. As you know, we're closing San Juan. We're trying to repower IPP. In addition, in their spare time, they do all the negotiating of the LA contracts, and that's the Grayson Repowering Brain Trust right there.
Do they do windows?
They do, occasionally. Ramona had some downtime today. We were looking for something to do. That made sense. But I think, you know, I'm extremely lucky to have them. I'm extremely proud that they're on my staff, and you should be too. But those numbers are a reflection of the hard work that these gentlemen do.
Congratulations.
And we're very, very proud of this. And like I said, we're done, at least under the current law, and we have a lot of flexibility to go after the new requirements, but do it at our own terms, which I think is a good position to be in.
Ms. Friedman.
Well, I mean, I know that it does fit in with your philosophy, but I do hope that when the law changes to 50%, that we'll be at 75%, and that we continually try to set the standard for the other cities and showing that you can be renewable and also be fiscally responsible. And we've done that, and we can continue to do that. Also, I just, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but I also did see a presentation recently about natural gas and about how the next trend is renewable natural gas and using things like landfills to generate natural gas and moving away from petrochemicals, I'm sorry, from fossil fuel natural gas and fracking and moving towards truly renewable natural gas. So hopefully, that will be allowed to be in our portfolio as a renewable at the time when it becomes more widely available. But I'm sure that's something that you're tracking.
Correct. And right now, we have the biogas, which doesn't show up there. It's lumped into the renewables. And as part of the Grayson repowering, whether or not we decide, you decide, to go forward with the main Grayson repowering, we are going to upgrade our landfill gas, our biogas project, and that should also have an impact on this as well. So absolutely, you will see, I think, as coal is retired, no new coal contracts can be signed in California. My guess is people will start looking at the natural gas next. Majority of our natural gas goes to Mangdoli and Burbank for the operation of that facility and another portion of it to Grayson for our own operation.
Thank you, Mr. Zern. This is a motion to note and file. Will someone like to make a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Eight E, please.
Eight E, Fire Chief And Chief Of Police Regarding Request Concerning The Acceptance Of Funding From The United States Department Of Homeland Security. 2014 Urban Area Security Initiatives, UASI Grant Program In The Amount Of $751,677. Eight E one, motion to accept grant funding and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the city of Los Angeles for the award of funds under fiscal year 14 UASI grant program. Eight E two, resolution to dissents with competitive bidding and authorize the execution of a purchase agreement with 3M in an amount not to exceed $70,000 for automated license recognition systems. Eight E three, resolution of appropriation to appropriate $751,677 to multiple projects allocated between the city of Los Angeles and those cities recognized by the County of Los Angeles operational area, including Glendale.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa.
The UASI grant that we received from DHS, you see in your staff report, this is both a police and fire grant, and it is a reimbursement grant requiring no match. Periodically, we get these funds, and we allow the departments to invest in equipment and apparatus that they need that ultimately allows us to repurpose otherwise general fund dollars that can go towards other functions and other priorities. So you see the grant agreement that we are asking for your blessing on, and the dispense for competitive bidding has to do with existing technology that we have in place now, looking to expand that program, and thus, we would continue to use the same provider and not bid that out because we'd be looking to work with 3M. With that, if you have any specific questions, Chief Castro is here, Battalion Chief Probst is here, representing the fire department, and they can answer any specific questions on the apparatus contained in your staff report.
Are there any questions?
And training, I should say.
On this?
No.
Does someone like to make a motion?
Move the item.
Eight E one, two, and three.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Eight F, please.
Director Of Human Resources And Fire Chief Regarding Amendment To City GFFA Memorandum Of Understanding. Eight F one, resolution amending City GFFA Memorandum Of Understanding Amendment Six.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. This is a rare, unique, and very special policy decision for the council to consider, particularly when we think about the delivery of service and the people that provide that service and the cost of the people who provide that service. It's no surprise that we are a service business, and the large bulk of our general fund cost is our people. Of the two departments that make up two-thirds of the general fund, police and fire, we have a heavy emphasis on making sure that they are funded in such a manner that we provide safe service with respect and dignity to all of our residents. That said, I am pleased and proud to present to you the proposed memorandum of understanding with GFFA, which is effectively an extension of the existing agreement. Now, cooperation really speaks to really a tolerance of two different parties trying to find ways to work with one another, whereas collaboration, I think, speaks to an alignment of interests and values and goals. And to the extent that we have a true collaboration with the Glendale Firefighters Association, I think that's represented here in the bullet points contained in your staff report. Now, the council has been through the number of closed sessions that regard this particular item, but allow me, if you will, to go through just a couple of items for the benefit of the general public, and certainly, Mr. Doyle, our HR director, is here who can give you specifics on any of the items that were negotiated, as well as Mr. Stavros, who is, Captain Stavros, who is the president of the GFFA, and again, representing the department as Chief Probst. Here we have an extension of the agreement, and along with the extension, the increase in the cost sharing to an unprecedented level over the course of this extension by the members of the GFFA, ultimately to 4% of the employer's cost of the pension cost by the effective date of 2017. We will see an enhancement to the service levels to the community by the expansion of the paramedic program, as well as changing language that will save us money in overtime and, at the same time, allow us to send more fire recruits to the paramedic school so we can put more paramedics in service. And by expanding the number of paramedics or the personnel who receive the paramedic bonus, specifically captains and engineers who maintain their certification, we can return paramedics and fire engines and fire trucks into EMS, full EMS service, more quickly. I would also point out to you that there are a number of administrative benefits that are here within the MOU related to the tier-two conversion for our enterprise resource program, as well as the unblending of the other post-employment benefits cost, which will save us, as we get all of our employee groups into alignment, upwards of $229 million of an unfunded liability today. Last but not least, two key items that were really the elements of the council's priority, that if we were going to extend, these items had to be met. Come back to this notion of containing the overtime cost, and we do that by changing language, key language in the MOU with respect to the staffing policy as it pertains to compensatory time off, being able to work on workers' comp-related absences, and, as I mentioned earlier, being able to send firefighter recruits versus firefighters to paramedic school, because under the constant staffing model that we have, when somebody is off, somebody has to fill that spot, and somebody filling that spot oftentimes does it on overtime. The last element that was very near and dear to the council was to ensure that this department, on an ongoing basis, strives to reflect the diversity that this community is known for, and we have the opportunity to do that by changing the language in the MOU that will allow us to, as the program progresses and matures, be able to pull up to 50% of recruits from an in-house pool of candidates, as opposed to the recruitment that you often, so often, hear about, where 2,000 people will show up and ultimately get screened down because more than half of them don't have the qualifications to be a firefighter with Glendale Fire Department. This will allow us to pull youngsters from within the community, just as we do in the police department, shape them into cadets, ultimately to ambulance operators, and as they demonstrate their ability to operate in a high-stress environment at the highest level in LA County, the ability to serve as a Glendale firefighter and hopefully firefighter paramedic. So you have a number of items that ultimately, at the end of the day, for this extension of the MOU, will actually save the city of Glendale more than half a million dollars, primarily coming from the overtime cost. That is something that, as I say, is unique and a demonstration, not of cooperation, but truly of collaboration, and the association is certainly to be commended. So with that, Mr. Doyle is here. If you have other questions for Chief Probst or Captain Stavros, they can answer those, but I'll conclude the staff report by recommending this item to you.
Thank you. I do have a card from the public. Mike Mohill.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. You know, this is what they call a nice pat on the back by councilmembers and the fire department. Nothing has changed. Artie, can you flip it around easier? You know, when 85% of fire calls are not, are medical, okay, we have a problem. They're not fighting fires. They are spending most of their time in the firehouse. There's no large fire. This is not, this is not New York City where there are tremendous fires, okay? As long as firefighters can continue to receive 90% of their last year's salary as a pension for life, the system will not change. And on council right now, we have two councilmembers, Najarian and Friedman, who have, in 2013, received thousands of dollars from the fire department. Mrs. Friedman, who represents the far-left side of the Democratic Party, received $12,390 from the fire department in 2013, and Mayor Najarian, who represents the soft side of the Republican, so-called Republican, received $7,958, excuse me, $7,958 from the firefighters association. Ladies and gentlemen, these two individuals now sit on council and protect the people who've given them campaign contributions. I think I would call that a conflict of interest. Why don't you, you know, often you'll say, "I can't vote on this because I live near this piece of property." But why don't you recuse yourself by saying, "Hey, I've received campaign contributions from this organization, and I don't want to vote on this item." But yet, you haven't said that, have you? Another important item to remember, folks and viewing audience, these firefighters, God bless them, retired age 50 or 55, depending on the contract, and they retired as millionaires. The amount of money they contribute to their pensions is peanuts to the responsibility of you and the viewing audience. Remember in 2011 and 2058, we had to kick an additional $58 million to CalPERS because they didn't meet their Rosie 7.5% investment return. Oh, and other important things about the fire department, folks in the viewing audience, did you know that according to the Department of Labor's statistics, firefighter's job is not dangerous? Not dangerous. After all, 85% of their work is medical-related. Why don't we have, bring back the private ambulance service that we used to have, that Mr. Starburg, our previous city manager, said we could save money by having the Glendale Fire Department do the ambulance service. Didn't work that way, folks. Where's all the money going to? Not a one. Please, please vote on the utility's users tax, but also let's remember that 80% of the salaries and the pensions of our police and fire department, okay, comes from the general fund. That's 80%. My slides are not right. So, folks, remember the number, that 80% is required to pay the salaries and the pensions of our union workforce, police and fire. Thank you.
Ms. Friedman.
I just want to say that I think that it's in extremely bad taste to talk about how not dangerous being a firefighter is, not a week after a firefighter, three firefighters were killed in the state of Washington fighting forest fires. I find that to be in very bad taste.
That's not Glendale, hello.
Don't respond.
And by the way, the Firefighters Association did indeed do an independent expenditure in my race. I didn't accept money from them. I couldn't have accepted that much money legally, and I'm very proud that they chose to support me. I have absolutely no qualms about that. I am happy to have their support in my council races.
In fact, Ms. Friedman, it was this council that imposed strict campaign contribution limits, previously unlimited amounts, and it was this council several years ago that mandated a maximum contribution limit of $1,000. So when Mr. Mohill says that, "Did you get more, or did I get more?" $13,000?
That I got more. I mean, clearly, I deserved it, but I didn't know that.
$9,000. That's clearly a misstatement and an attempt to, I guess, poison the well in this discussion. And this discussion is about a contract for our firefighters who perform an essential service to our city, a service that I'm very proud of, that we're all very proud of, every one of us, not just on the dais, but that live in the city of Glendale. And it is a, it is a forward-thinking and very, I don't want to say, let's say, advanced type of agreement, not heretoforeseen by the city, saving how much, Mr. Ochoa?
At the end of the term, I think it's $561,000 is what we are anticipating, and that's being conservative.
Of savings.
Of savings.
So the public should know that.
How much was this?
I believe it's $561,000 is the number that we're looking at.
$561,000.
I would only add as well, Mr. Mayor, that in terms of folks who might look at this with a jaundiced eye to say, "That is just too good to be true." This is also the council. This is also the association that voluntarily voted to eliminate a score of full-time salaried union members in favor of part-time ambulance operators at the, with the idea of saving money to make sure that we are maintaining four-person fire engines, which allows those engines to stay in service longer and provide that level of service for those. 85% of our calls, of the record number, I think we're going to hit 18,000 calls for the fiscal year that just ended, of those calls that are EMS. So this truly is unprecedented collaboration.
Thank you. Ms. Devine.
I just want to say that I think the most important part of this MOU and the dialogue that went on and what one of the goals was, and the most important goal, I feel, was that the contract would be cost-new... that the contract would be cost-neutral and have components which would address overtime and containment. And I think when you hear "cost-neutral" and a $560,000 savings over three years, I just think it's the best we could do. As far as Mr. Mohill's comments, you couldn't pay me enough to be a firefighter. I have so much respect for them, and whether they're doing emergency calls or fighting fires, they are putting their lives on the line for the community, and so I have no problem with this MOU.
Quick question. This MOU or this contract, is it a public record?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I encourage anybody who has a question about this, these new items that we voted on, or this MOU, to take a look at the contract and see what the numbers are and why this is being done. The selling point, one of the selling points to me was saving from sending recruits instead of firefighters to paramedic training, which is almost eight to 10 new recruits a year that you can do, instead of paying a firefighter to go to a paramedic school and then replacing with another firefighter with another, I don't know, time and half salary. This is huge in the upcoming years and when the times are going to get tougher for us. And we know the economy goes up and down, so we're going to face tough times again. So I think this was one of the selling points to me, and that's why I'm supporting this MOU.
I'll simply say that this MOU is a result of a long process, negotiated process, between the GFFA and the city, and it's taken into consideration all the realities that exist today, and this is the best agreement that we could have reached on both sides, and we reached it. So with that, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, I'm not sure if Ms. Devine wants to weigh in.
I think she already made her comments.
Okay.
Move the item?
Second.
She's back.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, GFFA. Next item, please.
Nine hearings, nine A, Director of Community Development regarding 2015 Congestion Management Program Self-Certification Process, nine A one, resolution finding the city of Glendale to be in conformance with the congestion management program and adopting the congestion management program local development report.
This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing and turn to Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. The CMP is an exercise that's been in place for the better part of two decades and really is the framework for an ultimate and presumed congestion management fee that MTA or some other regional government entity would levy to generate ostensibly funds to improve mobility and transit. That has not yet come to fruition, and thus, each year, we go through the process of having a hearing where cities agree in the self-certification process to maintain and adhere to their TM or TDM, the Transportation Demand Management Ordinance that we have in place, continue a land use analysis program where we count all of the demolitions and developments by way of building permits and demo permits for the course of a year, that ultimately sets a catalog for regional planners that, at some point, presumably, a fee would be attached to. As I say, that has not yet come to pass, and so we go through this exercise, and that is the point that we have here tonight. We're recommending that you approve the resolution finding that the city is in conformance with the CMP and adopting the CMP report for the city.
I don't have any cards on this item. I'll close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
At nine A one?
Nine A one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's move to the next item.
Twelve oral communications, five minutes. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
I have two cards. The first one is from Woody Wise.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for the opportunity. My name is Woody Wise, proud resident of our city of Glendale. I have produced a documentary called Brotherhood of the Popcorn. It's all filmed here in Glendale, Burbank, and Hollywood, and it's been selected as an official selection of the Burbank International Film Festival. Festival runs September 9 through 13, and Brotherhood of the Popcorn will be on Sunday the 13th at 2:00 p.m. at the Burbank AMC Six. And all information and tickets can be found at brotherhoodofthepopcorn.com. And with your permission, I'd like to show you my trailer.
Roll it.
Do we have sound?
No.
The Cliffhangers is a group of young men my age who watch old black-and-white movies mostly and serials called Cliffhangers.
We're from all different backgrounds. My background is theaters and video and working in the movie theaters, animators, retired animators.
I've never had a real job my entire life. You want to pay me to do this, draw cartoons? Heck, where do I sign up?
Fish truck drivers, there's retired school teachers, retired newspaper man, retired singer, but somehow, the movies bring us together. We talk about films, old films, new films, stars.
There's my buddy, Gene Oxley, one of my favorites.
Marilyn Monroe, Ron Morkley, Ron Roy.
I want to be the guy that's in that movie with that girl.
It's just like a Saturday matinee as a kid. It brings you back to your childhood. If I was a good kid, I'd get 25 cents to go to the movie, to get lunch, to buy candy with, and popcorn, and see 25 cartoons, three movies, and a couple of movie serials.
We had to think of a news cinema, and they were perfect for children. They lasted an hour, and it was a little paradise of mine.
Don't tell me I'm too old. I'm not too old.
Boy, it was like a left hook that dropped me right to the ground. Lateral Parkinson's disease on my right side. I'm going to watch my career disintegrate right in front of my eyes.
I like it all. There's nothing in Hollywood not to like.
Popcorn's still on aisle 12.
They're all characters. They all have their own thing. Rocky feeds the dogs. Jack orders movies every other week. He's got thousands and thousands of movies.
Don't talk about religion. Well, I think they're all kind of religious. I think they thank God for every good picture we ever made.
But if you're going to anything, don't give up.
We're there not only for the movies, but a lot of it's just camaraderie, friendship, and being a member of the Cliffhangers. And the next thing you know, there's a whole buffet of life in that house. Everything you would want in life is there.
These films, just like the Cliffhangers, have somehow stood the test of time. They have faithfully brought us together, reinforced our brotherhood, and connect our present lives with our memories of yesterday.
Find the passion in here and go do it.
I'm going to start a sisterhood.
Sunday, September 13th, 2:00, AMC Six in Burbank. Information at brotherhoodofthepopcorn.com. And tickets, and the tickets are only $10. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Mohill.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Legacy, Part Three, Mayor Najarian and Councilwoman Friedman. July 21, 2015, I presented Part One of the Legacy of Mayor Najarian and Councilwoman Friedman with a PowerPoint of pictures of the Holland Partners' properties on Wilson Brand and Wilson Orange. The pictures were of dangerous hanging balconies over the public right-of-way at both buildings. In order for the developer to maximize his profits, the city granted numerous variances. Inferior construction material was used, and no large green belt was planned. Buildings set back zero to two feet forces the public to walk under dangerous balconies, taking the risk that an object from above would not fall down, causing bodily harm. Unfortunately, sooner or later, if someone gets seriously hurt and a lawsuit follows, the city of Glendale will be named and all parties involved. Mayor Najarian, having firsthand knowledge of both buildings, could have told the public in the past he had voted no on the Wilson Brand building and voted yes on the Wilson Orange building. Instead, he chose not to distinguish between the two properties stated and hated all the pictures shown and had voted no, leaving the impression with the public his message of being against overdevelopment and strongly working to preserve low-density development. In Legacy, Part Two, I presented the minutes of October 30, 2012, meeting where Mayor Najarian and Councilwoman Friedman both approved the Wilson Orange building. Having been caught in a lie, our mayor left the impression I was showing two properties, but I was not. The pictures were only the Wilson Orange project. To the surprise of the viewing audience, our mayor asked the city clerk to show a PowerPoint picture of two 16-story buildings proposed by the Holland Partners back in 2007. This, he told the viewing audience, is what he could have had voted, but he voted against those two properties. Mayor Najarian showing two 16-story buildings was the bait and switch of a showman, a politician caught misleading the people. The two 16-story mega apartment complex had absolutely nothing to do with the six-story building complex with the dangerous hanging balconies. Like the con man, Mr. Najarian, razzle-dazzled, baited and switched before his audience. Ladies and gentlemen, after approving about 90% of the ugly mega apartment buildings in the downtown area, Mr. Najarian would like to be your next county supervisor. Councilwoman Freeman said she liked the mega apartment buildings of the Holland Partners. Mrs. Freeman was for several years on the design review board criticizing single-family dwellings that did not fit the neighborhood, but as the councilwoman granted developers numerous variances in order for them to maximize their profits at the expense of the public. Councilwoman Freeman has approved 100% of the ugly mega apartment buildings in the downtown area. Her vision of Glendale is one of a large east coast city with all the urban problems. Ironically, many people chose to live in Glendale because we were not a big urban city. Councilwoman Freeman, for your run for the 43rd Assembly seat, I understand your millionaire friend and developer, Mark Nathanson, recently hosted a political fundraiser for you. In October 2014, Mr. Nathanson contributed $4,100 to your campaign. Reported as of July 27, 2015, some of Mrs. Freeman's millionaire developer friends who have contributed to her campaign are Holland Partners, $750, Rick Caruso, Americana, at brand, $1,000, Disney World, $1,000, Lemley Theater, $1,000, CMG Construction, $1,000, Real Estate, $4,000, Glendrake Architect. Folks, just follow the money, and you'll see who follows Mrs. Freeman. She is their favorite candidate when it comes to building mega apartment complexes. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Any final comments of the council? We will be adjourning tonight's meeting in the memory of former mayor Bob Garson. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.